Six thirty.
I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item C, adjustments to the agenda.
Have one adjustment for the agenda for the board's consideration. It would be to adjust the agenda by adding the following to J, new business, be an executive session under one MRSA twenty-eight for the sole purpose of conducting a due process expulsion hearing. Would add that as item eight.
I move that we adjust the menu as the superintendent just recommended.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Four zero. Item D, approval of minutes for September eleventh, two thousand eighteen.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of September eleventh, two thousand eighteen, board meeting as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Thomas, I'll let you decide which one of them was second.
Hearing none. All those in favor? Item E, communications and correspondence.
Have one communications that came in via email that's not in your packet. I will address that in my report.
Thank you. Item F, public participation. Mr. Hamilton?
Good evening. Before you start timing me, or just, I want to preface this by saying, both to Mr. Higgins and Mr. Clifford, I've seen phenomenal changes under your leadership. I think that things at Ellsworth High School have improved, so I hope you take my comments in the spirit of generating conversation and hopefully looking at some of the issues that I think are needed to be looked at, and I think other people might have those same issues. So I will talk fast because I know I'm timed, so. So I'm here this evening because I'm concerned by the ongoing struggle of the Ellsworth School Department to implement a proficiency-based system and corresponding standards-based grading. The inconsistencies and multiple changes have yet to achieve a fair system that challenges rewards and fairly great students at all levels of aptitude. This has had a negative impact on some of our students. I want to be clear that I'm not arguing for or against proficiency-based learning, but I am very much arguing for the recognition that there are consequences associated with system change. The first goal of any type of change is to ensure that the changes are clear and measurable. The first year of this change took place when my oldest son entered EHS as a freshman. Five years later, we find ourselves in nearly the same position that we were when he started as a freshman. My other son now is a junior this year, and I can say without question that the system has been, that they've had negative impact by the failure to establish a consistent system. I want to make three points. First, in the five years that my children have attended EHS, we have had five different grading systems. This, the grading system has been manipulated and changed with the stated goal of making it fair for all students. This is a nice platitude, but it fails to meet the face, straight face test. In fact, evidence overwhelming demonstrates that the grading system is disconnected in many ways from the proficiency-based system. Simply put, students with aptitudes exceeding the proficiency level have been penalized and contrary to all the rhetoric do not have opportunities to go beyond their achievement if it falls between proficiency and the four-point-oh rating. This is only accomplished on a per-test basis, which is contrary to a proficiency-based system. Children with higher aptitude should be able to accomplish additional work or move ahead of the instruction to advance their proficiency and earn corresponding credit. I distinctly remember confirmation of this very point during that first summer prior to implementation when my son was a freshman and when, the first year that this change took place. Implementation of the changes in the grading system this year took place with zero transition time for the students despite the fact that it represented a significant change in how performance is measured. Two very significant changes already having a negative impact. First, the lack of credit for homework is a challenge in that the only grade that counts now is a test score. So students who excel, who put the time, effort, and energy into their homework and try to advance their grade no longer receive credit for that, and I believe that that's a reflection that it only focuses on one portion of the student population. Depending on the course and the teacher, the number of summative exams vary greatly. Fewer exams will have a greater impact on student outcomes. I understand that progress reports have been delayed for this very reason because there weren't enough scores to put this out. Second, students have been operating under a system that had allowed them to retake exams. This has been replaced with a system that allows retakes but maintains both scores. The first problem with this change is that it's a significant departure from past practice, and implementing it without a transition for students is unfair. More importantly, this method completely breaks down what is included as part of the decaying average system, which is the other significant change that is taking place. I would bet that outside of the school personnel sitting in this room, I would be able to find anyone who could provide me with the mathematical equation for calculating grades based on a decaying average. Students could earn the same score total of all tests throughout the year, so two students, same scores, but depending on which test that they scored lower on, at which point in time of the year, they could end up with an average, a different average. That is an unfair system. This takes me back to my earlier point. We're also being told that the grading system in two thousand seventeen, eighteen was flawed because it didn't allow students' averages to go up regardless of how well they performed at the end of the year. This means that students who performed well have been cheated out of higher grades. This is unacceptable, puts our students at an unfair disadvantage when it comes to competition for scholarships and college admissions. And the grading system by the accounts of school administration in that case would have lowered the scores for our students last year. That can't go back and be corrected, and that was, of course, because there were, I was told, so many grades that at the end of the year, if you did well, you did better, your grade didn't change; if you did worse, your grade didn't change, and that's a negative impact on students who were doing well. My third and final point is the fact that the grading system is unfair because the proficiency-based system has some flaws in just its general application. It assumes that learning is linear and cumulative. It assumes that a category proficiency will build upon itself over the course of the year with the final grade representing the assessment of that skill. This isn't really accurate. If you look at how instruction is taken place, each portion of the curriculum focuses on a unique aspect of the course. An example would be, let's say that standard is something in terms of calculating, mathematical equations, and you learn subtraction, division, multiplication, and addition. If a student isn't very, doesn't perform well on subtraction, and that is at the beginning of the year, on this decaying average, that will be corrected, but if they don't do so well on multiplication, and that's later in the year, they, their grade will suffer because it's a grade that remains in place. That's not a proficiency base. It doesn't measure their skill set at being proficient in computation. Each portion is being measured by that content of the curriculum at that point in time, and so the grading system creates an unfairness the way that it's being applied. I think these are important issues that can't wait until the year-end to take an assessment and then apply yet another change. It's a cumulative effect. My son is going to be applying for colleges. I would just ask this board and the administration to bring together a group of stakeholders to talk about this and to see if there are some changes that can be made to reduce some of the impact. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item G, administrator board reports. Mr. Clifford?
Good evening. How am I report? First of all, sorry for my attire. I had a meeting in Augusta today, and then I stopped in at school and got caught up with other things, so I didn't get a chance to go home and change. So first of all, this Saturday, or this Friday and Saturday is the academic Hall of Fame induction, and Friday night, they will be introduced at halftime of the football game, and then Saturday night, we have the induction dinner right at the high school, and that's from six o'clock to eight o'clock, and any community members that want to be a part of that, they can call, and we'll reserve tickets, and they can pay at the door. It's twelve dollars per person. And, you know, the induction night, and class night, and senior banquet, and graduation night, those are the, my four favorite of the year, so it's always a great time. A lot of alumni come back to see friends of theirs that are being inducted. We have people traveling that are inductees that are coming, and it's exciting weekend. It's a, it's a great time, so please come if you can, and there's a list of this year's inductees. And at this time, I'd like Grace Hi, who is a senior, and her mom Hope to come on up. So every year, we have the DAR Good Citizenship Award, and Grace was the winner of that this year. And so just a little bit about Grace, is Grace is the daughter of John and Hope Hi. Activities, which is part of the award, include student council, Spanish club, show choir, fall musicals, spring play, class officer, honors festivals, triem, tennis, swimming, National Honor Society, National Science Honor Society, and prom committee. She has also won the following awards: highest grade point average for, in BPA, Human Biology Award, BPA Spirit Award, Employee of the Month at Hanford, and she's a regional thespian officer. And there's really, we have an incredible senior class this year. We really do, and the way that this is chosen is faculty and staff choose, and just a list of names, and then we cut it to four kids, and then everybody chooses on that, and we had twenty to twenty-five kids that, you know, were deserving, but in the end, Grace really stood out, and it's because of all of her accomplishments and all the activities that she's in, and she's a terrific kid. I know most of you know her, so please give her a hand. Any questions for Grace or her mom?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice job, Grace.
Thank you.
And she plans on being a nurse, maybe at Humane Fortin, which she's looking at right now. Any questions?
Thanks, Dean.
Ms. Gabbinelli?
How are you this evening? So we have kicked off K eight, our Seven Strategies of Assessment for Learning book study by Jan Schapwe, and Mrs. Lewis and I kicked it off together at a PLC. We did a little skit, which hopefully has not leaked, I guess I think someone was videotaping it, but we had a little fun with it, and the teachers are really getting into it and kind of diving into thinking about how they're using assessment in their classrooms and how it works best for students and for the, the learning of students, so that's pretty exciting. On October third, our fifth grade took a field trip to Woodlawn to learn about the history of apples, composting, and soil, and I got several emails complimenting our students on how well they represent at our school, so that was really incredible, and I'm very proud of our fifth grade students and their teachers. I gave you an enrollment update. We are growing. This past week, we had three more students enroll in the middle school, so we're keeping an eye on that, but it's great. It's all good stuff. Co-curricular news, play rehearsals are underway for our production of Beauty and the Beast, which is pretty exciting. Our cross-country team took home the Parker Pruitt Trophy at the Parker Pruitt Invitational Meet for having the lowest combined boys and girls score of the meet, and the meet featured fourteen teams with a hundred and sixty-eight runners, so that's pretty impressive. And our soccer teams are hitting their mid-season stride with, with working together as teams and playing really well together, and the improvement we're seeing is tremendous, so that's great. We had a PTF meeting this afternoon, which was great, and I'm just asking parents to please continue to use our Facebook page. We're putting announcements and updating everything on the Facebook page for the school, and then teachers will be sending home information about parent-teacher conferences pretty soon, so please be looking for that information to come home. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bowles?
We just want to announce to seniors and their families that we're hosting our annual FAFSA night on October sixteenth in our cafeteria. You do not have to be an HCTC student or an Ellsworth student. This is for any senior across Hancock County. Fame will be at the cafeteria to allow families to get assistance in filling out the FAFSA form. Middle School Perkins Grant, I'm happy to announce, I mentioned this a little bit at the last meeting, we received ninety-five hundred dollars in funding to implement some pretty specific activities to help us implement the new middle school and CTE law that has been passed that requires us to bring career technical education to all middle schools in our service area. So I'll be meeting with middle school principals October nineteenth and October twenty-second. I had to do two days because, to accommodate everyone. Not everyone's calendars could align that perfectly, so I'll be meeting with middle school principals two days in October. We already have done some preliminary planning of these specific activities, and we're going to nail down some dates and really talk about how to best implement this grant funding together. Also along with middle school programming, our fall middle school camp is coming up. It will be Saturday, November third, from nine to twelve. Flyers are actually going to get emailed out to schools within the next forty-eight hours or so, so that families can put that date in their calendar, and all of our CTE programs will be offering sessions that day at HCTC, including marine service and welding. So middle school kids, grades five through eight, can have the opportunity to participate in two programs. There are scholarships available, and we really don't give many out each year, so if any of you know of students that maybe couldn't afford to come to a middle school camp on a Saturday morning, I would love to give more of those out. It can be any middle schooler in Hancock County that are in grades five through eight. I'd be happy to have them. Just call the school, and I'll work that out with them. As I announced at the last meeting, we were participating in Autumn Gold, and this year we did two phases of Autumn Gold. We did the storefront decorating contest, which we won, which was announced at Business After Hours. If any of you came to HCTC this fall, you would have seen our scarecrows that were dressed up in the different program areas, as well as our windows. That was a fun kind of culture-building team effort for the staff and the students, which was nice. But more importantly, to me, we participated in the waterfront portion of Chamber Weekend, Autumn Gold Weekend, and had a barbecue session down on the waterfront right next to Chatterfest, and we got to answer a ton of questions about what HCTC was. I couldn't believe how many people saw us and didn't know what HCTC was or what Hancock County Technical Center was, and a majority of my staff was there that day, so we answered a ton of questions and really were out in the public talking about our school, which to me, that was the most impart of the day, and we did raise about eight hundred dollars for Skills USA as well, so there's always that, too. As you know, last year, we participated in the Department of Ed's school review process, which is the CTE's accreditation process for our schools, and we did get the report back this summer. So currently, what we're doing right now, every program and every school-wide strand gets recommendations and commendations, so I'm individually meeting with each staff member about their programs, commendations and recommendations currently, and we're setting goals, one-year goals, three-year goals, five-year goals, to talk about how can we implement some of the commendations that we have control over, and then also talking about in PLC time, the school-wide strands to do goal-setting for how we can address some of the school-wide commendations and recommendations that were given to us by the state. So that's something that we're focusing on as well, and I wanted to make sure I reported back out on how that went for us last year. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Carmen Ramos?
Today, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the professional development in our district. It's been a busy month for professional development opportunities for our teachers. I think that our Ellsworth faculty is exceptional, not only because they're excellent educators, but also lifelong learners who are really interested in creating and maintaining a network of educators in their fields and acquiring more tools for their teaching toolbox to best support our students. Teachers have attended workshops about the Elementary Math Diagnostic Interview, or EMDI. It's a new screening tool for teachers in grades kindergarten through fifth grade to identify students who can benefit from additional support in math concepts during response to intervention time. It's been developed by Cheryl Toby from the Department of Education, who's also an exceptional math educator in her own right, and she's been doing a series of workshops with our teachers from the summer to the fall that have been really well-received. She's extremely, extremely talented at both teaching and understanding math concepts of children. Our gifted and talented teacher at EMS attended the annual GT workshop put on by the DOE. Over the summer and in September, nine high school teachers have participated in training for our new peer coaching pilot called Student-Centered Coaching, and they're combining a book study trainings and working in pairs and triads with our instructional coach to develop this program, so it's very exciting. We just had a wonderful meeting the other day. Several teachers from HCTC attended the State CTE Conference. On October fifteenth, several of us are attending a training on our new K through nine, well, ninth grade's been using it, but we're using the NWEA assessment tool throughout the school now, where we'll learn how to parse out the data of the assessment and use it to create personalized instructional plans for our students. On October sixteenth and seventeenth, we have three teachers in the elementary school who will be attending a workshop called the Purposeful Integration of Technology in Math in the elementary classroom. It's very exciting that they're bringing that program, and that's actually introduced to us from Cheryl Toby. Those teachers who are, will be attending will be coming back and hosting never-stop-learning workshops after school to share what they've learned with our teachers in the same way that we've been doing the Momentum Program for literacy in K three, which is bringing ideas about how to integrate technology into literacy. These workshops will help our teachers learn how to do the same with math. Eight teachers in the middle school will be attending the Mammal Conference. That's the main association of middle-level educators. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Close. They're going with Erica Gabbinelli, and they'll be benefiting from a wide range of impactful instruction and insight. Our PE department is attending their annual conference for the Maine PE Association in November, and our high school social studies department is attending the National Social Studies Conference as well. I think this really speaks to the dedication of the teachers to continue learning and be trying out the new best ways of meeting students and, at their needs, and also to be sharing what they already are doing so well. So it really builds a group of educators that can share instruction with each other, and this year, we're asking that all the teachers who go to these workshops, bring back pieces of them, be mindful during the workshops, they can come back and share them with the teachers who did not go, and, so that we can spread that learning throughout the district. The last piece I just wanted to mention is that our after-school, our Title One After-School started today, and our, we have enthusiastic children who are excited to be part of the program. We're waiting for some permission slips to come in, so we hope that all of our families who've received one will make sure to send them back in and bring their children to the program. It's an excellent program. Our teachers this year are Rebecca Maddox Wilber, Megan Merrill, and Sandy Pearlman, and we have two new ed techs who have joined us, Jim Tracy and Tara Peterson Brewer, so we're very excited. They have wonderful ideas that they're going to be supporting our teachers with. They will have time to do homework and to do project-based learning, get some outside time, so we're really hoping that our students will take advantage, and our families who have gotten those permission slips will make sure to send them in so that they can join us. It's, I'm very proud of the program and the teachers who are doing the work, and they, and our teachers have chosen to come back again because they themselves find that it's a really wonderful way to reach the kids after school, so we're looking forward to all of our students joining us that have been invited.
Right now, how many students are taking advantage of that program?
Right now, we have fifteen, as of today. We have fifteen, but we have space for thirty, and so some of the students who would normally have come back haven't sent their permission slips in. I think, you know, it's a busy month, so families are, have a lot going on, a lot of sports and that kind of thing, so I'm hoping that people will hear our call and have their children come in. We do have snack available for the kids, and they'll have some chance to get some exercise as well as doing some academic activities to meet their needs, so we're really hoping that we will, and anticipating that we will have a full house shortly.
Rachel, if those thirty slots aren't filled, will we invite additional children?
Yes, yep, and I do want to thank Kelly Rudolph. She is our after-care coordinator and summer school coordinator, who is actively talking to families and answering all their questions to make sure that they understand, you know, the pieces of the program so that they are excited to bring their children, and because we have so many new children, we're hoping that we can invite some new kids into our program as well. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Higgins?
My turn. Good evening, everybody. First thing I'd like to report on is that this coming Thursday at the Hancock County Superintendent's Association meeting, representatives in the Maine Department of Education will be coming to provide us with an overview of Maine's new accountability model, the Every Student Succeeds Act, and the new school report cards that will be out on the Department of Education's new website. They're going to look a lot different than they have in past years, and this is the opportunity for the DOE to come around to the nine regions in the state and put that information out, and my plan is to provide you folks with information on that at your next workshop session. Speaking of the Hancock County Superintendent's Association, at our last meeting in September, the week of our board meeting here, we held our annual organizational and planning meeting. Among the plans for the coming year are continuing our work with potential regional collaborations with transportation and special education, and I would give an aside, I think I mentioned this at an earlier board meeting, we have a little bit of experience now in doing some regional things with transportation. Mr. Saunders, who's here tonight, worked really closely with the Blue Hill School Department to help them get their school year open, so that, that may be an opportunity for us to look at how those things may move forward in a collaborative and beneficial operation. Also looking at potential collaborations in special education, bringing Drubbin Woodson in, who's the school department's attorney, to do some regional professional development for superintendents and boards. We identified a list of presenters that you would like to have at our monthly meetings for professional development and other reasons, and we're working on scheduling a work session, meeting session for superintendents, board members, and newly-elected legislators following the November elections. Some of you who've been on the board for quite some time, this may just be Brenda and Paul, we did one of these, I believe, four years ago, prior to the election. We've decided we're going to wait until after the election this time and see if we can pull the same thing together. If you remember, the last time, it was a pretty positive and beneficial opportunity. We envision the same thing this year, and hopefully we can advocate for some things that are important to our school department. We do have some new staff that have been hired since your last meeting. We have a 504 case manager and coordinator, Rebecca Faulkner. Chip Dugan's been hired as the new varsity wrestling coach at Ellsworth High School. He was an assistant for the past couple of years. Tyler Costigan is the new theater show choir director at EEMS, and Rebecca Alley is starting with us as the evening coordinator for the adult education program. One resignation I received over the weekend, Michelle York, ed tech at EEMS, will be working for two more weeks, and then she'll be moving on to another opportunity, and we still have a couple of vacancies left. We're still looking for a K four art teacher, and I know our technology department is still looking for a technology integration teacher. I'd like to close my report tonight by just going back to a comment I made at your last meeting. At our opening days, I challenged all of our staff, myself included, to try and harness the energy, excitement, and enthusiasm of the opening days of the school year for the purpose of perpetuating it throughout the remainder of the school year. At least from my perspective, I'm pleased to report that based on observations from my many visits to all of our schools, I'm seeing on a regular basis a high level of positivity, active classrooms, and student engagement and learning opportunities, and this also includes when I'm walking through the halls and I see students and I ask them individually, "Have you learned anything today?", and when they say yes, I've got the opportunity to say, "Tell me just one thing." It's really a fun opportunity, but the fact that we still have that type of a positive culture and atmosphere in our schools is a testament to the efforts of our administrators, teachers, and all of our support staff members to ensure that every one of our students has a positive, beneficial, and rewarding experience at our schools. That concludes my report, unless you have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item H, committee reports. The policy committee did not meet this month.
Personnel committee continuing negotiations with the administrative assistants. We had a meeting on September twenty-sixth, and we do not have another meeting scheduled that we hope to soon.
Okay. Thank you. Item I, old business. We have none. Item J, new business. Staff presentation.
Staff presentation. Unfortunately, we had our adult ed director, Annie Sargent, scheduled to present on a recent trip she took to Washington DC for adult education purposes. Unfortunately, I learned today that she was unable to attend tonight, so we'll try to reschedule that for another meeting, and time was too short to get another presentation.
Consideration of requests for overnight out-of-country trip.
I believe you received this in your packet, but I know Mr. Clifford and Mrs. Cutten are both here this evening.
I'm sorry. Thank you for having me tonight, and I'm here to basically ask permission to take students to Ecuador, including the Galapagos Islands, in June of two thousand twenty. As you know, we have a trip scheduled to go to Europe in, oh, thank you, in April of this year, and we went in April of last year, and... we went in April of last year, and I plan, if I, if it's okay with you guys, to continue doing this on a regular basis. And one of my goals is to make this as interdisciplinary as possible. And so part of the reason why the faculty and I came up with the Galapagos Islands is because of the rich biology history and ecology history within the islands themselves. So between the Spanish, so Ecuador is a Spanish-speaking country, the colonial history that the students will see in the capital when we arrive, it's an eleven-day trip. We spend the first day in Quito, and we tour the, the capital, and it's a colonial history tour. We hit a couple of museums, we walk through the colonial quarters, and then the second day, we fly from Quito to Santa Cruz Island, I believe, and we boat between the islands and, and tour three of, three of the six of the Galapagos Islands and study the biology there. So we go to a flamingo habitat, we will hike a volcano and talk about the geology of the volcano, we will see the tortoises as they're swimming by, there's really quite a bit. We go to the Charles Darwin Research Center. That alone is a tremendous opportunity, just between the history and the science of it. It's a very unique opportunity to get to go to the Galapagos Islands. The, the country of Ecuador has named it a national park, and they have very, very highly regulated who's allowed to visit there. So in order to get proper permits to go, you pretty much have to be on an educational tour or a research scientist. So it's unlike most places in the world, you can't just go there because you have a paying ticket and you want to. So this is a really unique opportunity. And so we'll, we'll basically enjoy the flora and fauna while we're there and study it, and then when we go back to Quito on, I believe, the seventh or eighth day, the seventh day, we spend another day, we go into the mountains, and we go to a cloud forest up in the tropical rainforest, and we tour an orchid garden and a butterfly garden. And it, you know, looking at two different areas of tropical ecology between the Galapagos Islands and on mainland Ecuador is really a huge opportunity. And so it's an eleven-day trip. Day one and day eleven are pretty much taken up with travel, so there are three days on mainland Ecuador and then six days on the Galapagos Islands. So it's really a combination history, biology, Spanish tour. And that, that it would, that was done on purpose, to make sure that students get the most for their money and the maximum amount of learning, and there's a lot of interdisciplinary work done. So, so that's the gist of it. If you have questions, I would love to answer them.
So I see on your report here, you're, you're planning on going right after graduation?
Yes.
So it would take place during, still during the school year, but after, after seniors, and seniors who graduate are still allowed to go on this trip?
Yes, yes, and, you know, a couple of people have asked, "Well, you know, what if you have behavior problems, they've already graduated?" I have the power to send them home, and I feel very confident, especially, you know, given the cost of this, that there will be no behavior problems. A big, a big part of managing behavior is setting high expectations, which so far, so good. We've, we've dealt with that very, very well. We had zero behavior problems when we were in Europe. And a big part of that is the looming thought that if someone misbehaves, I can put them on a plane with a chaperone and send them home. So nobody's really interested in that. So, also, I'm happy to report that the majority of students who have gone on, who went on the trip and are going on the trip this year, like the Europe trips, have been earning and, and spending their own money on this trip. And I, I feel wonderful about that for a lot of reasons, but not the least because it really improves student behavior. They have, you know, some, some skin in the game, and it is a lot more meaningful for students when they have worked hard and they've earned the money and they've put it up themselves. So that's something that I, I feel very positive about. I did not want this to become something that, you know, only the kids who had the money got to go. We've had lots of kids say, you know, "I don't have the money, but I'm gonna do this." And they figured out how, and we, we are doing fundraising, but, you know, with the cost of these programs, like the fundraise, it's hard to fundraise all of it, and so, you know, students are earning, and that, that's very meaningful, too. It's a good thing.
I want someone else's question. Okay. I, I do have a question, Karen.
Sure.
I appreciate the planning that went into this, I appreciate the connection to the curriculum, and supportive of the international trips pending the board approval, and I know we've had that conversation.
Of course.
The question I ask when I look at the departure date, incidentally, we're, we're starting work on the 2019-20 calendar.
Yep.
So we have no way of predicting how many storm days we're gonna have, and I know the initial draft has the final school day of June, I believe, June eighteenth, if you have three storm days. So how does that work for students who are still in school? That's the only question I would ask.
That's a good question for Mr. Clifford, too, but we're just starting to shift curriculum a little bit so that the end of the year, students have options to study things of their choice with more intensity. And so what we would do with all students, including the seniors who go on the trip, is prior to the date of departure, we would do intensive Ecuadorian history, intensive biology, ecology, and really try to pull it all together so that they would still be participating in school. Personally, I think the value of this trip is so educational that it would be just as much as going to school, if not more. Certainly, that time of year, a lot of students check out. It's hot. I can attest to being on the third floor. And so offering them another venue to, to stay engaged and to stay in school and to be learning, but in a completely different place, I think that's totally worthwhile. We, we felt strongly that the seniors who are going on this trip really needed to be able to go to their high school graduation. As a parent, I would never want my kid to skip graduation, and so we are trying to plan it such that, you know, graduation will happen, and then we will depart afterwards. You know, and, in, in terms of traditional school, yeah, they'll miss a few days, but they will be learning so much on the road that I think that, I think it's worth it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Worth the questions?
No questions.
I make a motion.
So part of what we've been working on since the spring is that time period when seniors are done until ninth grade through eleventh grade, or still studying, is usually about, you know, could be seven days, could be ten days, that's a tough period of time, you know, and it's June and classes are winding down, and like your psychology, sociology, upper-level classes, you could have, you know, twenty-five in the class and twenty of them were seniors, so now there's five kids for the next week and a half, and what do, exactly do I do? And in doing some research, there's some schools that are kind of like an inter-session for college, so you have a two-week period where you study something else, and we're looking into that right now. The staff has looked at interest-based curriculum and interest-based classes to offer during that week and a half time, and gotten standards together, and so it'd be kind of more of a hands-on approach, and they would be satisfying standards that they wouldn't normally satisfy or have at all in our curriculum because it's kind of the out-of-the-box subjects that we're looking at, and trips fit directly into that. So it, it goes into what, the work we've been doing since last spring, and it's premature, so I'm not ready to present it yet, but we have a lot of the work done, and it's something we're real excited about.
All right, thanks, Dan.
Ready? Thank you very much.
I make a motion to approve the request for the overnight out-of-country trip to the Galapagos Islands as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Four oh. Election of alternate to the Maine School Board Association Delegate Assembly.
I would like to, I move that we elect Brenda Thomas as the alternate.
What we need to say is there are two of us going, and he is the delegate, so it's the obvious, and I'll be the alternate.
I second that.
And I'll do my best to make sure you don't have to step in.
Thank you. Discussion. All of us in favor?
Are you abstaining, Mrs. Thomas?
I am abstaining. Second read of amended policies.
And these policies are being brought forth, and you heard Mrs. McKenney mention the policy committee didn't meet, that's because none of these policies changed from the time you did your first reading, actually, two months ago. These slipped by on the last agenda, so you have four policies in which changes that were approved through a first read are still there for second read and approval.
I make a motion to approve the second read and adopt amendments to the following policies. KCD, public gifts donations to schools. KF, community use of school facilities. KF-dash-E, facilities request form, and KFA, community, community use of Ellsworth Performing Arts Center.
Second.
Discussion. All of us in favor? Discussion of proposed Maine School Board Association resolutions for 2018, 2019.
And as you saw through your packets, and I believe that you received through a mail or from MSBA, you have, excuse me, you have seven resolutions that are gonna be considered at the delegate assembly, and your typical practice has been to discuss those and act upon those as a board here to give your delegate and/or alternate guidance in the voting.
Okay. So I should go through everyone, probably.
You've done, you've done both in past years. You've done a, a brief overview of the resolutions.
Well, first, the first resolution is the CDS Child Development Services move to public schools, and Maine School Board Association supports the eventual move of programs for three-through-five-year-olds into public schools, but only if it's well-planned and appropriately funded by the state. And the public school staff must be involved in the planning, there must be state funding, and we need a detailed funding plan for it to take place in our thoughts, so. School safety is the second one. They want ongoing risk assess, assessments for active shooters and other disruptors. Increase the focus on social and emotional support for students. Training for early warning signs. Increased funding for the revolving school renovation fund. Funding for school resource officers. And we also support tasking the department's facility office to advise, collect, and disseminate best practices on keeping children safe. Gun-free schools. Support the current state ban on guns, loaded or unloaded, on school property, and opposes any legislation attempts to amend that prohibition. Proficiency-based diplomas. Supports the ongoing work toward the implementation of proficiency-based diploma systems in Maine. And the critical elements include teacher training, multiple pathways to accommodate all learners, capacity to offer quality instruction and designate constant, content areas, and the ability to support struggling students and challenge those who exceed proficiency Special education reform. The School Board Association believes that special, the special education system created by Congress more than forty years ago needs to be reviewed and amended on the federal and state level to assure that all students' needs are being met, and that this should be fully funded. Starting pay for teachers and a longer school year. They support a law change to length, lengthen the school year to a hundred and eighty instructional days and ten days per, for profi, excuse me, for professional development. And additional state funding in conjunction with that longer school year, and to raise the starting teacher salary to forty thousand dollars. And that, in that hope, they, they are hoping to attract more teachers in the profession and make work in the rural parts of our state a more economically viable option. School attendance. The Maine School Board Association supports a recommended age of five and compulsory attendance at age six. And they will advocate for the law change in the next sess, first session of the next legislature.
Questions? Or comments?
Any motion?
Yeah. I move that we support the MSBA resolutions that Brenda just read and direct the ESP delegate to vote at the MSBA Delegate Assembly accordingly.
Second.
Discussion.
As the, as the delegate, I am comfortable voting for all of these resolutions. As long as the board, the rest of the board is behind me on that.
I am, yeah.
Okay? Yes.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All of us in favor? Four oh. Approval and award of snow removal and salting sanding bid for 2018-19.
I don't know about the board members, but it seems like it's awfully early to be addressing this issue.
We're hoping it's awfully early.
Yes. You should've had included in your packets the results of the bids that were submitted and read on October third. As we have in the past several years, we had three different vendors place bids or submit bids for snow removal, salting, and sanding at our four properties, EEMS, EHS, HCTC, and our bus garage. We required separate bids for snow removal and salting and sanding, and as our bid document specified, in order to be considered, a bid had to be submitted in the format in which it was requested. So after reviewing the bids on October third, along with myself, Facilities Maintenance Director Chuck Turnbull, and Business Manager Carolyn Heller, we took a look at what the low combined bids were for each of the properties, and are recommending the following. At EEMS, Clark Construction LLC, combined bid of twelve thousand dollars at EEMS. Ellsworth High School, RF Jordans and Sons, combined bid of sixteen thousand five hundred. For HCTC, RF Jordan and Sons Construction, five thousand dollars combined bid. And for our bus garage, KJ Dugas Construction, sixty-eight hundred dollars combined bid. And would, would note, as I put on the document that was sent out to you, the amount that we would be paying this year is almost two thousand dollars less than it was last year. So I think the bid process was, was beneficial again this year.
I move that we approve and award the snow removal and salt sanding bids for 2018, 2019 as presented and recommended by the Finance Committee.
I second that. Hearing none. All of us in favor?
Thank you.
Item seven, negotiations update.
I believe I already addressed that in my committee report.
Right. And item eight, executive session under 1 MRSA 20A 405 6B for the sole purpose of conducting a due process expulsion hearing.
I make a motion to enter executive session under 1 MRSA 20-dash-A for the sole purpose of conducting a due process expulsion hearing as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Discussion. All of us in favor?